Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Southern California Rail Authority, the Library District, the Water District, and any other agency that I may have overlooked. They'll all be opened concurrently. First item of business before this council, our custom and habit, is to begin every meeting first with an invocation, and tonight it will be given by Gene Selig from the Barmidbar Shah Mahalla. That will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Girl Scout troop number 1475. May we rise, please?
Thank you very much, Mayor Caldwell and city council members. A few days ago, we recognized, not celebrated, but we recognized Kristallnacht. It means "The Night of Broken Glass." And that was the ninth and tenth of September 1938. I remember it well. We lived a little bit out of town. Following morning, I went to school, just like any other day. The headmaster came around to all of the classes, pointed to all the Jewish children and said, "Go to my office." He told us, "Go home. Your parents will tell you why, and don't come back tomorrow." That was the last day of my education, over there. Many people were incarcerated in various concentration camps. There were thirteen of them. And knowing that they would not be able to leave, some of these people had a pen and a piece of paper, and they wrote various things. One of those things that were written by a person whose name we don't know, it was found later, is in our Sabbath prayer book. And I will tell you what that person wrote. Remember that the day after or two days after, his life was taken. "You must not say that you now walk the final way, because the darkened heavens hide the blue of the day. The time we've longed for will at last draw near, and our steps as drums will sound that we are here." Kristallnacht was sixty years ago, and for some of the people who were there, we remember it each year. And I would say to that, we pray every day for world peace, and I hope it'll come, at least in my lifetime. Amen. To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, as always, Captain Mark Taylor, our chief of police, does a wonderful job. We thought we were going to have the Girl Scouts, and we were going to give the Girl Scouts some recognition certificates, but clearly, they didn't make it. And so I appreciate Mark jumping up and handling that door. We have a very, very unique program in City, and the spark plug that put the program together and keeps it alive is Councilman Rudy Cabralis. It's our military banner program, and we do have a banner to be presented today. And at this time, I would ask Councilman Cabralis to officiate on the military banner.
Good evening. Thank you for attending our council meeting, and it's my privilege and honor to recognize our military on behalf of the city council, who are serving in the war zones, Afghanistan or Iraq. And tonight, we honored Mike Thiede, 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 from the United States Navy. And do we have members of his family here tonight?
Can you have the rest of your family here? Up front.
I would like to present this on behalf of the city of Victorville to you, and of course, his banner will be put up on the standard. And when he returns, the standard will come down, and it'll be presented to you and him as a family. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for recognizing my husband in this way. He is serving in Iraq at this time. He left us in June, and he'll hopefully be returning to us safe and sound in June. So thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. This is my oldest daughter Hannah, our daughter Michaela, and our son Logan.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your help.
Well, Councilman Cabralis is coming back to the dais. First item of business on all of the agendas, the city council, the redevelopment agency, the airport authority, the rail authority, the water district, the library district, first item on all of those is what is referred to as public comment. Public comment is that opportunity afforded by state statute to anyone who wishes to address the council or in its capacity representing the other agencies that I just identified on any subject that is within our area of responsibility jurisdiction. Public comment is not something that can be prepared for. Obviously, we do not know on any given night whether somebody will be here to speak on public comment, and if so, what that subject would be. So the general rule for us is that we do not respond to public comment. If you're going to speak in public comment or later in public hearings, we ask that you fill out the white cards that are available in the foyer. That will give us the contact information necessary so that if what you share with us requires that we do schedule the item for a later council meeting, or we need to get more information from you, or we need to provide you with information, whatever the case may be, we would then have the information necessary to communicate with you. Public comment is limited to three minutes. I have multiple cards from the same individuals, but I think that they are on different subjects, as best as I can tell going through the cards. But to the extent that somebody in public comment says something that is consistent with what you intended to share with the council, then in the interest of time, we would hope that you would just simply indicate that you agree with Speaker X, whoever that might be. That will be the format for public comment when we get to public hearings, which is a completely different issue in the city council agenda. While we use much the same process, we will many times respond to comment that is made during the public hearing for appeal hearings and other types of public hearing items. The first card on the public comment section is from Mike Page, the president of the Mojave Water Agency. Mr. Page?
Yes. Good evening, mayor and council members. Thank you for three minutes. I'd like to make a presentation this evening. Both Director Cox and Director Lowry, who represent Victorville, wanted to be here tonight, but were unable to do so. I would also, though, like to call up our general manager Kirby Brill, if he would come up here. We have a presentation to make to Mr. Bob Hunter and to recognize his efforts in water conservation. I don't know if it's appropriate that you stay up there. If you come down here, whatever you'd like, Bob. It'd probably be great for you to come down here. I hope most of you know, I know the council does, not only has this city taken a lead in water conservation, but Bob has been your point person for a number of years. In fact, in talking with Kirby, we estimate that this valley is three to five years ahead in water conservation because of Bob's efforts. And from Mojave Water Agency's standpoint, we really appreciate that. In fact, if I understand the figure correctly, the city itself, just through its own conservation efforts, through its citizens, has probably saved $900,000 to the ratepayer through those conservation efforts in supplemental water as part of the adjudication and replacement water. So Bob, I'm going to read something to you, and this is what we have here on the plaque, and that is, "The Mojave Water Agency extends sincere appreciation for your exemplary service on the city council and for your demonstrated leadership elevating the significance of water conservation throughout the Victor Valley region. Our board sincerely appreciates your effort. Without your help," as I mentioned earlier, "we would not be as far advanced as we are." In fact, there's other water agencies that do planning like we do for entire regions that wish that they would be where we're at today, and you took the lead, and we sincerely thank you for that, if I could present this to you. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Page, and please thank all members of the MWA, and specifically, Bev Lowry, who is a real favorite of the Victorville City Council. The next item, one public comment card I have, is Frank Sexton.
My name is Frank Sexton. I'm a resident of Victorville, and one of the things I'd like to talk about is what you gentlemen have just been talking about for a little bit, has been water.
This card says that you want to talk about renaming City Hall.
That's also on the agenda. We'll go with the City Hall, then.
All right.
Personally, I think it's a very bad idea. I'm not arguing that the individual who you wish to name City Hall after is not an excellent, outstanding individual, but let's be frank, the man is a businessman. He donated land for a park, which was to his benefit. Naming a City Hall after the man is absolutely ridiculous. I come from New Jersey, where we had a little bit of a problem along the same lines back there, when they moved the New York Giants over to New Jersey, and the first thing they did was name Jersey, the stadium there, they named it for the New York Giants. We, New Jersey residents, spent millions of dollars to pay for that, and to this day, Jerseyites are still very, very pissed, excuse my language, about the fact that we have a team, but we don't have a team. And the same thing's going to happen here in this town. If you end up naming this hall after someone else, it's like the Joe Blow City Hall. "Oh, this is the town of Joe Blow." You know, it's not the Victorville City Hall. It should be the Victorville City Hall. The residents paid for it, it should maintain the resident's name. That's the play I have to say.
Mr. Sexton, I know that that was an item to be on the agenda, but it has been, that item has been continued. So I will make sure that your comments are incorporated into the public record, but the current schedule, as I understand it, for that item to be discussed by the council is, I believe, the second meeting in December.
I'll be here.
I'll have the city clerk, is it first meeting or second meeting?
It would be the second meeting.
The second meeting, which is the eighteenth?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth. So if you don't come back on the sixteenth, your comments will be incorporated.
I'll be here, with bells on. Thank you, gentlemen.
Good afternoon. Which of my cards do you have, sir?
The one I have in front of me is renaming City Hall.
Okay. You want me to say my piece now, or should I?
It's your opportunity. You have three minutes.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to say, I like the name of Victorville, okay? Like my husband. City Hall should retain its name to include Victorville. It's nice to say, we would like to honor someone for something that they did in the past, whether it's ten years ago, twenty years ago, a hundred years ago. But unfortunately, this developer is not Davy Crockett. The developer came into this area to build houses at a financial gain. Nothing else. To me, a developer, that's what he is. He did not appear to do things out of the good of his heart. Money is money, no matter where you put it. I would like to have the City Hall just named plain old Victorville City Center. It sounds classy. Thank you.
Thank you, and I will share with you the same thing I shared. I'm assuming that--
I'll be here, too.
Your husband?
Yes, he is.
Well, then, your comments will be incorporated into the record, but presumably, you'll be here--
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. The next card, again, is from Valerie Sexton, and she wishes to talk about, it says item one, but then above it, it says golf club, so I am not sure what it is you want to talk about. You have three minutes.
I did make myself some notes. If I can just quickly read through it this way, hopefully, I get everything in three minutes. Is that fine? Thank you. Oh, by the way, I forgot to say good evening to everyone before. The golf club started out costing the taxpayers approximately a million dollars, that's what we were told. Then it went up to two million, and the final cost was, I believe, over eight million. So just eight million dollars is being spent for a handful of old funny dummies, and I'm one of them, okay, who can pitch a ball around. If they want that ball that bad, let them put it in their pocket and take it home. Okay? We're looking for a youth center in Victorville. The youth is our future. They should be nurtured. If I recall, back in the papers, whenever that subject came up, they said they would cost between eight and ten million dollars. What is it going to cost the taxpayers by the time they're finished? Twenty million? Twenty-five million? I suggest turning the golf club into a youth center and not a hangout for a few. And besides that, when did this city go into the business of selling alcohol? This is not a country club. The city has just become the enabler and the better of alcoholism. There are adequate conference rooms for meetings and get-togethers in this town. We don't need any more, but for the youth, we have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sexton. The next card up, Victor Valley Water District Agenda Item Three, Robert Bithorn. Perhaps, Mr. Bithorn, I have called you up prematurely. The only ones I'm dealing with right now are the public comment items that are unrelated to agenda items, and as I look at your card--
Oh, okay.
You're here specifically to talk.
A little later, then.
Yes. So I have a series of cards wishing to talk about the Water District Issue Item Three. I believe that that is all of the cards that I have just for item one, public comment. Have I overlooked anybody, or did somebody fail to turn in a card? Ms. Miller, your card, as I see it, it says, "Three, water, and number seven, question Do you want to speak on public comment?
Thank you, mayor and council members. There was something done at the last council meeting that really upset me, really upset me bad. In the closed session, this should have been done in closed session, not in open session. One of the council members was accusing the other council member, as far as you can read the whole thing, was accusing him of being a liar, and this is not right. This is not business, and I don't know why the mayor didn't stop it when it started. It should have been stopped. It should have gone in the back room. Then you discuss what you, people, three of you, four of you, have to say back there, not in front of the public. That was not right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Now, I think I've concluded all of the cards that wish to address the council or its other agencies under item one, public comment. Again, have I overlooked anybody, or has somebody failed to turn in a card that had intended to speak under public comment? If not, then that would conclude item one on all of the agendas. We will now go to the Library Board of Trustees, and I will defer to Councilman Hunter, who is the council's liaison to the library.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number one's been taken care of already. Number two is revisions to the agenda. I don't believe there are any.
No revisions.
Thank you. There's nothing else on the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
That would conclude the Library Board agenda. The next is the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority. Again, we've taken care of item one, public comment. I am unaware of any revisions to the Rail Authority agenda.
No revisions.
Then a motion to adjourn that meeting would be in order. The Airport Authority agenda, again, item one, public comment, has been taken care of. Item two does have a revision, which is an addition to the closed session. Item seventeen, basis, Mr. Bortnowski, a city attorney, the basis for the revision and the addition.
That's correct. This was just incorrectly listed on the council agenda. It should have been listed as a closed session on the airport authority, it's really the airport authority item. Just a missed, we noticed that change after the posting of the agenda.
No action is required. Then we will go to item three, which is the consent calendar. It's been predetermined. These items are routine and non-controversial. It will be adopted with one motion unless there's a request for removal.
For approval.
Moved and seconded. That's unanimous. Item four is request to consider proposed resolution number SCLAA 08015, which if adopted, would amend the Conflict of Interest Code applicable to designated positions pursuant to the Political Reform Act of 1974, and rescind former SCLAA Resolution Number 06015. I would indicate to the council and to the audience, this is the same item as number four on the Redevelopment Agency agenda, number eight on the Water District agenda, and number eleven on the City Council agenda, and unless the city attorney disagrees, I would propose that this action for these items be at one time with one motion.
That's appropriate, given that you have delineated all of them, so.
Questions or comments from members of the council?
For approval.
Motion and seconded. May we vote? That is unanimous, and that concludes the Airport Authority agenda. We'll now go to the Redevelopment Agency agenda. Again, we've taken care of item one, and I am not aware of any revision to the Redevelopment Agency agenda.
Revisions.
Then we go to item three, which is a request to approve Desert Plaza's OPA and appropriate an additional $5,500,000 from the Hook Subregion of Bear Valley Road Redevelopment Project Area. Questions or comments from members of the council sitting on the Redevelopment Agency Board? Hearing none, a motion would be in order.
Second.
Ananmas. Item four, proposed resolution number R08016, which is the one that we just dealt with concurrently with the previous agenda. There's no revisions or add-ons that I'm aware of, so that would conclude the Redevelopment Agency agenda. Next is the Water District agenda, and I'm unaware of any revisions to that agenda.
No revisions.
Item three is a continued public hearing to consider arguments for or against Resolution Number VWD08013, which if adopted, would supersede the Victorville Water District Resolution Number VWD08002, and it would fix charges for water service connections and other related fees and charges, and fix rates for water service. Now, this is an item that I have several cards indicating that they want to speak during the public hearing, but before I open the public hearing, I will ask either Mr. Roberts as the city manager, or Reggie Lamson, the department head responsible for the Water Department, one of them or both of them, to please provide a brief and succinct overview of this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I will try my best, and certainly a pleasure having Director Page and General Manager Kirby Brill here for this item tonight. You know, in California, the issue of water availability is a serious issue, and Mojave Water Agency, in my opinion, achieved something absolutely remarkable, which was to bring all of the various parties in the Mojave Desert Basin together to agree on a solution to our long-term water supply. And we do pump more water out of the ground than is naturally replenished, and so the only way to solve that issue is to import additional water. The importation of water requires money to purchase the water from the state, and all of the various parties and interests, whether they were agriculture or existing residents, all had very different interests and expectation of the impacts. And the Mojave Water Agency achieved something absolutely remarkable, which was to have all of the parties agree to the physical solution. It was the adjudication, and all of the parties stipulated to that, and it's a very simple agreement. If you pump water out of the ground, then you share in the cost of purchasing water to replace that, and then you pass that along to your customers. The Victor Valley Water District stipulated to that judgment, agreeing to pay its share. The Baldi Mesa Water District stipulated to that judgment, as did the city of Victorville. Those two districts now are consolidated into the Victorville Water District, so in accordance with the stipulation that was executed and approved by the court, everyone that uses water is required to put the water back. And the way that Mojave Water Agency went about it is it, rather than arguing over who has superior rights, they simply said, everybody is on a level playing field, everybody equally shares in the cost of replenishing water. And so the Mojave Water Agency, through the years, has worked to bring our basin into balance, and I believe, much to their credit, have achieved something quite remarkable, which is to bring our basin into balance with the imported water. And so, as has been agreed to, we all must participate in the cost to import this water, and so the rate increase that before you is tonight is simply to collect the dollars available to provide to the Mojave Water Agency so that the Mojave Water Agency can purchase the water from the state of California. The cost of purchasing that water from the state goes up like everything else, and so the Mojave Water Agency must increase its rate as the state increases its rates, and then all of the users must also then increase their rates. This is something that every one of us that uses water bears the responsibility of replenishing our groundwater basin, and this is the way to equitably share that cost. So we all, no one likes to see their rates go up, but the result of this money, a hundred percent of it, will be to put the water back into the ground to assure that this valley has a long-term sustainable supply of quality water. Staff would recommend approval of the rate increase.
Before we go to the public hearing portion, we don't often get guests from the Mojave Water Agency, so I would afford an opportunity to either Mr. Page and/or Mr. Brill, if they wish to comment on what is essentially our pass-through to you. It's an important issue, and the city of Victorville has historically been very supportive for all of the good works that your agency does, and specifically, the quality and the for all of the good works that your agency does, and specifically the quality and the expert that you have in Kirby Brill. Mr. Brill.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure, I'm not sure I can add too much. I think that was very succinctly put. But just one other way of looking at, for literally, well, a long time, but for decades, we've had an issue that's, that we've all dealt with, and that is the overdraft of the basin. You know, we can't do this because of the overdraft. We've got to be careful about doing this because of the overdraft of the basin. When Mr. Roberts indicated that the basin is in balance, that overdraft with the purchase of this water pursuant to the rules of the judgment, that overdraft is now eliminated. We are now moving with the supplemental water towards a sustainable system that will provide water for the, supply for the valley for decade, many decades to come. So, yeah, this is all part of the physical solution that was agreed upon many years ago. It's been, it's now been fully implemented, as the parties agreed it would be implemented. It was a long battle. It was a long fight in getting here. There was a lot of court fights. There was a Supreme Court ruling. And this, this community, with the leadership of a lot of the different municipal entities, including the City of Victorville, have worked through those issues, and we're now in a system where we're bringing in imported water, purchased with the funds generated from all the different water users, and we've used that to now balance the basin. So I would offer a suggestion that, at least for the Victor Valley, that the term "overdraft" be eliminated from our vocabulary as a result of, or at least partial result of, the actions being taken tonight, so.
That's, that's good news. Questions or comments from members of the council before we let MWA go? Thank, I, I, they don't want to hear from you anymore, really. I'm sorry. Too much good news. Okay. As to this item, Victor Valley Water District Number 3, the first card or the next card up, is Robert Bithorn. Mr. Bithorn.
Mayor and the city council, I just want to make a comment on that. I mean, in the last meeting, we, I guess we discussed what was the possibility of giving senior citizens and disabled personnel a break on the water bill of this 13% that was in the, was advertising the daily press, was in today's paper? I heard the percentile was 13% to raise. Am I correct, or am I wrong?
I'm not sure what the percentage is. Mr. Lamson or Mr. Roberts, do either of you know what the percentage of increase is?
No.
What you heard then is correct.
All right. Well, anyhow, this is, this was my comment to you, about the break for senior citizens and disabled. That's all I have to say.
I would simply respond that, I don't disagree with your premise at all, but much like other things in life, it's a fixed cost. It's a pass-through from the residents of Victorville in order to meet the financial obligations that have been allocated to us from the Mojave Water Agency. To the extent that we would reduce somebody's rates by whatever number, then we have to go and increase everybody that's under the age of 65, if it's a senior citizen rate, and jack up their rates more in order to compensate, because we have a fixed dollar number that we got to generate. And I would suggest to you, I'm over 65, I'd love to see my water rate reduced, but I'm not sure you'd be interested in paying a higher rate for me to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Norman Nichols.
Norman Nichols, good evening, city council. As I stated last month, 14 cents will give you $1.8 million, and that's all you need to make up for your shortfall for those three years. Your rate will give you another $5 million if you don't really need. I mean, I shouldn't say that. We always need money, but it's not something that the water purveyors should have to deal with. One of the things they look at is that Mojave Water Agency raised their rates 36%, so we're raising our rates 36% to compensate for it. The problem is that Mr. Roberts indicated that we get water from the aqueduct, which is true. Only 53% of our water comes from there. The rest of it is from free production allowance, and the cost of that is to buy shares, which you have already put in there. So I don't see where you need to raise that kind of money, because the money came out of MWA in that manner. If you looked at that proration of 53%, it indicates a 19% raise. This is prated on a usage basis. The other thing is the service charge increases. I don't know why they should tag along water rates, but they have, and I don't see that's appropriate to go with it. The rates can go up some, but not to that extent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Next up, Frank Sexton.
I have a question, gentlemen. Before you get around to deleting the word surplus, or whatever it is that he was talking about from the agenda, how much does Victorville get basically allotted for water from the Mojave Water Agency without having to pay for it, or paying a percentage of them?
Asking about the free production allowance?
Something along that line, yes.
Roberts, if you know that number off the top of your head, or Mr. Lamson?
President.
That takes care of the City of Victorville?
Yeah.
How much does that move?
Sir, we're not, we're not going to get into a debate, you and our staff. Question that needs to be answered.
I'll address it to you. How much does the, I believe, the water, this bottling plant over there is going to pull in between 3 to 5 million gallons a day, right? Is that correct?
Bottling plant issue is-
It's supposed to be a closed issue. I'm aware of that, sir.
Well, and it has nothing to do with the calculation from the Mojave Water Agency for our cost for supplemental water.
But somewhere along the line, the residents of Victorville are getting hit with a 13% rate increase.
That would occur whether the bottling plant was going forward or not, Mr. Sexton.
Would it be a full 13%? Or would it be a minimal? Or would we be stayed within our allotted residue, or amount of water, I should say?
Bottling plant has nothing to do with the free production. Has nothing to do with the cost allocation to the City of Victorville from the Mojave Water.
So in other words, it's a moot issue?
In my opinion.
Okay. Well, that basically takes care of what I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Sexton. Next up, Valerie Sexton.
Hi again.
Hello again.
I'll be finished one time. The water company did state a while back that there would be no rate increase in our water bill, okay? Now they're asking us to go along with a 13% for the first year, up to 30% over a three-year period. In my opinion, this is highway robbery. People's wages, their social security, their pensions, they're not getting 13 to 30% increase over the long run. This increase to a lot of people on fixed incomes, low income, is the difference of whether they go out and buy two cans of Spam or eat dog food for the month, okay? To live on, okay? I strongly believe that the city must have some form of a discount program. Again, I know what you said to the gentleman, but I think that they should do something for the seniors, for the disabled, for low income. Because if they can't pay it, they can't pay it, but unfortunately, the human body needs water to exist. It cannot do without water. On top of everything else, the taxable projects that are added on to the homeowners with this, 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 the college, the high school, whatever, okay? You're going to overtax the people so much that they, you're going to create a ghost town eventually. I was not here a while back when you had a similar situation where the economy just dropped and Victorville almost did turn into a ghost town, what I understand. But you're heading in that direction. If the seniors leave, if they're forced to move out, if the low-income homeowners who are barely making a go of it, and in today's economy, that's almost every one of them, who is left to pay for anything? Not the renters, because only a small portion of their money goes towards the water bill that the apartments pay. This should, in my opinion, the city should curtail all future housing and commercial development until they are certain that they have proper and adequate infrastructure in place. And that, for me, is hard to say, because I'm pro-development. I believe in growth. You have to go on, but you have to draw the line someplace. And I was going to finish here, but I have one more sentence.
You're way over your time, so please-
One sentence, okay?
Please wrap it up.
Mr. Roberts said that it costs money to buy water. I understand that, okay? But again, like you said, the water, the bottling plant has nothing to do with it. The water is coming from the same source. We're taking our drinking water from there, they're taking the water from there, okay? And it was really a foolish thing to let them into the high desert. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sexton. Next up, Dorothy Miller.
We shouldn't raise rates until we have the exact figures. I've not seen those exact figures yet. Something is wrong. Now for the water. Some doesn't, does not even get their water bills. Even, and some just paid 820 to 922. That means we're still behind, way behind. I am glad the city has so much money that they didn't need it. I told the water manager, we was not, he was not doing his job. He resents me saying this. That, and passed the buck on down the line to four different departments that handle our water bill. I feel he should not talk to customers the way he talked to me. He should, he should answer. It has, it has been over a year, and it hasn't straightened up. Just, it goes back, back, and back, and back. Baldi Mesa and Victor Valley Water, who got the bills out on time, now such a mess. Five days off don't help the mess, and that is not really what we should be doing. We should be taking care of the people, and the people are not getting taken care of. They're just getting the shaft, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. That's all of the cards that I have wishing to address the Water District Agenda Item 3 regarding the proposed adoption of Resolution Number VWD-08013. I will close the public hearing and invite comments from members of the city council sitting in their capacity running the Water District. Questions or comments from members of the council? Hearing none, then a motion would be in order.
Oh, Mayor Caldwell, excuse me. Before proceeding with the vote, since this was a protest hearing, we need to read into the record what the number of protests received were.
Okay.
The number of protest forms mailed out were 26,601, and out of those, we received 2,325 protests, so it is not a majority protest, and it passes.
Thank you for that. And with that, a motion would be in order for Proposed Resolution Number VWD-08013.
For approval of the rate increase that recommended?
Second. Passes unanimously. Even though the issues behind us, I am going to make a couple of comments, especially to the lady that says we ought to stop growth. And I'm not sure that anybody in this council would agree with that, but as a practical matter, it's impossible. You know, if somebody owns land, they have the right to develop it. People have the right to procreate and expand their families. We, as a government agency, are restricted in terms of arbitrary and capricious decisions that people would find to be infringing upon what they think to be their rights. The litigation that would ensue would be staggering. Heard Mr. Brill talk about the fact that, and Mr. Roberts, that this entire Victor Valley went through a tortuous process known as the adjudication. And we ultimately got unanimity in the Victor Valley with, and Barstow, with regard to how to deal with the water issues. And the word is not surplus, it's overdraft, that has been suggested that we eliminate from our discussion. Water is a precious commodity everywhere, and especially when you live in an arid desert climate like we do. We are very fortunate to have not only groundwater supplies available, but a huge reuse program, huge conservation program, and the opportunity to acquire state project water through the water master, through the Mojave Water Agency. Suggestion that we stop everything, I can't speak for my colleagues on the council, but I would be diametrically opposed to that suggestion. You've had your time, you've had your turn. As to the suggestion that we lower everybody's rate over age 65, I suspect everybody at this dais would benefit from that, but I- Well, I look at your head, and I would have assumed that, well, most of the people on the dais would benefit from that, and a lot of people in this room. But I dare say, trying to convince the majority of the residents of Victorville that they should pay a higher rate so that people 65 and older get a cut rate, if you're, if you want to start an initiative and see if you can get the signatures to put it on the ballot, I think that's the only way that that would probably have a chance, and I think it would be a very slim chance. With that, we will go to Agenda Item Number 4, which is again a Consent Calendar. Those two items have been predetermined to be routine and non-controversial. They'll be adopted with one motion unless there's a request for removal.
No move.
Second. That is unanimous. Item 5 is a, is a Continued Written Communication, a request to award a contract to Kelly General Contracting and Engineering $646,850 for construction of Gateway Water Pipeline from Air Expressway to Momentum. Questions or comments?
I have a question. Where, where's this company located? Reggie? Local company? Good.
Further questions or comments? Then a motion would be in order?
Second.
Seconded. May we vote? Ananmas. Item 5, Proposed Resolution VWD-08015, which if adopted would fix charges for water service connections and other related fees and charges, and fixing water rates for service. Questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor and council, just a brief comment on this. At the time that the public hearing was established for the increase of the water rates which the council has just adopted, based upon the projected costs that we had received from the Mojave Water Agency, that first authorization allows us to fix rates up to that amount. Subsequent to the posting of that public hearing, Mojave Water Agency has reported to us that the projected rate from the state has come down, so the action that you are now taking will be to adopt rates that are lower than the amount that you previously authorized us to collect. So this, in essence, is a adoption of a reduced amount from your previous action.
Questions or comments from members of the council? Not a motion would be in order?
No move. Second.
Seconded. May we vote? Ananmas. Item 7, Request to Authorize Staff to Purchase Permanent Water Rights at a Rate Not to Exceed $3,700 per acre foot for a total amount not to exceed $2,623,300. to exceed two million, six hundred, twenty-three thousand, three hundred dollars. A motion is there, seconded? Who'd been seconded, may we vote? Not getting anything on the screen. Nothing on the screen.
Is it a yes vote?
Pardon?
A yes vote? I can record it.
Mine says that I have voted yes. But it's voted, it's just not going to pop up? There it is. Unanimous. Agenda Item Eight, Proposed Resolution VWD-08016, which if adopted, we've already adopted that that was the item for the conflict of interest which we adopted with the very beginning of the first meeting. There are no other items that I'm aware of for the Water District. And that concludes the Water District, and we will now go to the City Council Agenda. And again, we've taken care of public comment, Item One. We do have some revisions to this City Council Agenda. There will be a revision to Appeal Hearing Item Number Four, and there will be an addition, excuse me, there'll be a request to continue Agenda Item Five, which is a nuisance abatement proceeding. There is a revision to Item Seven, which is the addition of a letter received from Gresham, Savage, Nolan, and Tilden on today's date at three thirty PM, requesting to be heard on this item. And when we reach Agenda Item Number Six, I will recuse myself and leave the dais and the chambers and turn the gavel over to Mayor Pro Tim Almond, because that item, Mr. Dvornoski has determined I have a conflict due to the fact that I own shares in Walmart. So with that, are we prepared to go forward? Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, prepared to go forward, and on Item Number Three, which is your first appeal hearing, I would recommend that Councilwoman, or Mayor Pro Tim, sorry, Almond.
I refuse myself.
Well, in this maze of paperwork, I have lost that agenda item, so if you will give me just a minute. I found it. Agenda Item Number Three is a continued, no, that is not it. I'll borrow the city clerks. Item Three is an appeal hearing, an appeal to hear arguments for or against the adoption of Proposed Resolution O-8156 in either Version A or Version B, dealing with the appeal of a planning commission decision which denied an item for Mr. John Almond. Mr. Almond has appealed the planning commission decision. The issue before the council tonight is whether or not to overturn the planning condition, planning commission decision which denied the modification of eaves to a single-family residence located at one, two, five, six, three. Before I open the appeal hearing to the appellant, are there any questions or comments from members of the council? There any additional information to be provided by staff? If not, then I would invite the appellant, John Almond, to the, to the microphone to share with the council why you would want us to overturn the planning commission decision.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers? John Almond, homeowner?
I'm here tonight because Bill Webb thinks I live in a trailer. He's refused to give me a permit to cut my eaves ten inches back for two different reasons. The reason that I received in writing was Victorville Municipal Code eighteen point five eight point one two zero. I'm not sure if you gentlemen are familiar with that at all. Victorville Municipal Code eighteen point five eight point one two zero, manufactured home installation criteria. I've been able to speak to an engineer regarding this, and he pointed out a couple of points in it that explained it a lot more to me. Number one, the purpose of this section is to establish regulations for the placement of manufactured housing in residential zone districts and to ensure a compatible integration with surrounding conventional-built, single-family homes. For purposes of this section, a manufactured house is defined as a housing unit built with a vehicular chassis underneath it, designed and equipped for human habitation and for being drawn by a motor vehicle conforming to the National Mobile Home Construction Safety Act. It goes on regarding everything that's necessary that makes it so it'll actually be able to reside in a single-family residence area. Talks about the compaction of the ground, it talks about how the chassis will be planted in the ground, how everything will be connected. And then finally, it goes down to talking about the roof. And this is the point the engineer pointed out to me. He said, this is the way to keep square mobile homes that have a chassis underneath them with a panelized roof, meaning it's a flat, it's a big box. A flat roof, flat sides cannot be placed in a residential area with single-family structures. It says the roof pitch should be consistent with this, the roof covering should be this, the roof should overhang the exterior wall by at least sixteen inches unless similar or different types of overhang are seen by other homes in that residence. So basically, what this entire municipal code is about are trailers. Has nothing to do with my trusses, has nothing to do with the eaves, has nothing to do that pertains, or even states in it, single-family residence. It confirms it by, you have, in Section H of this municipal code, you have to submit photographs that show the mobile home in sufficient detail with regard to the siding material, the roof overhang, and the roofing material. The engineer pointed out that as soon as you try to bring in a trailer with a panelized roof construction, it's automatically denied. And again, I want to point out that has nothing to do with my single-family residence. But that was the reason I received in writing from the planning commission, actually, I should say from building, which is submitted to planning, which is why my modification When I went before the planning committee on my way here this evening, the municipal code was read by one of the planning committee members, and three of the five members actually laughed because they were shocked that it was, that was municipal code that was cited for refusing my work permit. Bill Webb actually had to explain himself for choosing that code, which had nothing to do with single-family residence. He said, and I quote, "I know it sounds funny, but it's the only municipal code I could find with regards to the lengths of the eaves." Excuse me, I have quite a few notes. Three months ago, I purchased an RV and parked it in my driveway. A city official called Bill Webb directly and asked him to do everything in his power to go ahead and deny me a permit and to go ahead and get that RV out of my driveway. I know this because Bill Webb sent out Code Enforcement Deputy Guy Eisenbrey to go ahead and discuss with me the reason for it. Guy told me that the city, who the city official was, I already knew who it was, he just confirmed it. He told me that Bill Webb had come to and asked him to go ahead and take care of this problem personally. He felt it was a little odd because this is, my home location is not even an assigned area of patrol. He's not even assigned to the city in that area. He told me that the front bumper of my RV could not impede onto the sidewalk. Well, we got a measuring tape, and my front bumper did measure five inches into the sidewalk, and he's told me that that was a city violation. I said, okay, what do I have to do to go ahead and fix this? He said I could either pour more concrete and park it at a different angle, but I had to be within the code to pour concrete, or he could go, I could definitely park it in front of my single-car garage because I have a three-car residence, and I can go ahead and back it in there. So that gave me idea, I'll go ahead and take care of it so it meets all the city requirements. I contacted a friend of mine who's a licensed contractor-roofer who works for a company up here in the high desert to go ahead and help me cut back my eaves so I could park my RV in the driveway, back it up two feet so it'll be nowhere near the sidewalk. This led to another complaint from the city official, and again, I had Code Enforcement knocking on my door. Guy was back, and he asked me, okay, where is your permit? And I said, well, my roofing contractor said I didn't need a permit. I contacted an engineer and I went over the issues. He told me that wasn't true, that I couldn't modify my trusses, and I had to put it in the back of the original order where it was because I didn't have a permit to go ahead and do that kind of construction. I came to the building department and asked to speak to Bill Webb at that time. He refused to see me. I retained, obtained all my permit requests and got everything I needed to go ahead and fill out the request, and I did my research regarding the trusses to find out what was true and what was false. I contacted Frontier Homes and Penfield Builders, which are the truss manufacturers of my home and the builders of my home. And what I discovered between the engineering and the builders of the trusses is I have what's called a non-weight tail-bearing truss. A non, I know, it's a weird wording, a non-weight tail-bearing truss. That means the eaves have nothing to do with the strength or the support or the integrity of the, the building. They're not even necessary, they're just for the facade, for the look. And then later, later, doing a little bit more research, because again, I didn't get any support from building or planning, I went online and looked up every single type of job that required a permit. Cutting ten inches off the eaves on a non-weight tail-bearing truss doesn't modify the strength or integrity of the truss and doesn't even fit the qualification for a permit, which I thought, when I presented that to building, they said, you, anything you touch or change or build, you need a permit. And they read off to me everything that requires a permit, and it doesn't say electrical modification, add-on, addition, da-da-da-da-da-da, doesn't say anything about cosmetic. So I was a little surprised about that also. Frontier Homes actually went a little further and told me that building and planning already knew this beforehand. Why were they telling me that I couldn't cut my trusses when it's already been on file with the city of Victorville that I have a non-weight tail-bearing truss? And this, this information was already in the city of Victorville computer system, and they're aware of it, where I could modify my trusses, and it's on file? I tried to go ahead and explain that to building, that even before Frontiers could build the home, they had to file this information, and it was approved by the city of Victor. So legally, from that standpoint, which is actually because I do have a non-weight tail-bearing truss, I can cut my eaves. I'm not violating the municipal code that has anything to do with truss manipulation or changing the strength of the integrity or the, the running footage or the term, whatever the engineer used regarding the structure of the house. So I paid my fees twice, and I was refused twice by Bill Webb's administrative decision. Again, he didn't want to come out and talk to me, even though I tried to call and make an appointment to sit down and talk to him, find out the real reason for it, wouldn't even make an appointment to see me. I had to try some, get some answers and find out why I was being refused, given the information from his office workers, because they didn't have an answer. All they kept saying was, an administration decision has been made. For six weeks, I was told that I could not modify my trusses, which I found out basically was a lie from the building and planning division. After I paid my fees to go before the planning commission, I finally received this written reason from them in writing, which was completely different from what I've been told for six weeks from code enforcement, from building, from planning, until finally, I received this last, in writing, they had nothing to do with it, which came down to the municipal code eighteen point five eight point one two zero, which has to do with the placement of mobile homes in a residential area, which doesn't, has anything to do with a residential structure. I went before the planning commission, and after they laughed at the reason, the planning commission discriminated against me, when Rob Kerr stated, "To suppress anyone else's construction, I make a notion to uphold, to deny construction and restore original condition of roofing." So basically, he, he confirmed to vote no, just to eliminate anybody else from asking to do, do the same type of construction to their home, where legally they can. Because Frontier Homes confirmed with me, for the last nine years they've been building homes up here, not one home up here has anything but a non-weight tail-bearing truss in all of their construction in the high desert. Again, I paid my fees, and here I am before the council. I'm hoping for some common sense to prevail, because all I'm asking is to comply with the city's codes. I'm not asking to change the structure, I'm not adding on, I'm not doing anything else but cutting ten inches off each side of the eave so I can back up my RV so it doesn't hang five inches over a sidewalk. Not something unrealistic to ask for. Again, there's no legal reason why I cannot cut my eaves. The only municipal code that exists regarding the trusses of a single-family residence does not apply in this case because I have a non-weight tail-bearing truss. I don't even need the eaves on my house. The second reason I'm here is because Bill Webb is doing us a favor for a city official by denying me a permit to finish my construction. I'm here for you to hope that you would change that decision so I could finish the construction on my home and put this matter behind me, because it's been going on for three and a half months now, paying my fees, paying my dues, submitting in writing, coming before panels, and getting unanimous denials. And I've been waiting for a legal reason to why I can't do it. That's about all I have to say. I presented it before, and here I am again. Questions or comments from members of the council for Mr. Almond?
I would just like to hear from our planning director, but I do know that some years ago, there was a issue with the, the length of the eaves, so I guess I would have to be, you know, get some refreshed information on that there. But I know there is, there is some regulations on it.
Well, as soon as Mr. Almond has finished with his appellant presentation, I will afford an opportunity for. Do you have anything else you want to share?
Well, the answer, Mr. Cabralis's answer, when I did go before building and planning, they said this is the only municipal code they actually had regarding single-family residence. See, when they try to compare it to the municipal code that I stated twice, that only has to do with a vehicular-chassis trailer, which has nothing to do with the strength and integrity of a truss built by Penfield Construction. So you're talking about the lengths of these. One thing I can comment on, when they start talking about the lengths of these, I've already presented to the planning commission that all I want to do is take off ten inches, which is going to leave the leave, the eve length nine inches on one side and fourteen inches on the other. And the reason they're different lengths is because every single eve on the north, south, east, west, south, east, west aspect of that house are different lengths. The front eaves of the house are eight inches. The north side of the house eaves are 22 inches at the first 10 feet, then it drops down to 10 inches, the entire length of the house. The south side of the house are 16-inch eaves and the back of the house are nine-inch eaves. I don't know if everybody, anybody here has ever measured their eaves. Every single side of my house is a different length. So the fact that I want to modify it, and I took colored pictures of my eaves to show the professional quality, because I don't want to make my house look like crap. So I, what did I do? I have a friend of mine who's a licensed roofing contractor. I said, let's make it look professional. And we did. We made it look completely...
Oh, you shared that part of your presentation already about the contractor and the engineer and all. Unless you have something additional that you haven't shared with us, then I'm going to invite Mr. Webb to come up and speak. You have any other witnesses that you wish to have testify?
No other witnesses. If I could, after Mr. Webb speaks, I'd like to speak also regarding any questions or statements you might have.
Well, as a general proposition, that probably won't occur. I won't rule it out altogether, but you're the appellant and you get to make your case. And it would take something extraordinary for us to invite you back up, but we'll see what Mr. Webb has to say.
Mr. Mayor, if I might. Mr. Allman, you've mentioned that a city official complained about your motorhome being on the sidewalk?
That's correct, sir.
A city official from Victorville?
Correct.
Okay, and who was that?
You can go ahead and check your computers. It's on file with the city of Victorville. I have Mr. Webb put that city official's name on the actual complaint.
Okay, I don't find it on my complaint here, but, and you mentioned that you tried to get a hold of Mr. Webb and he refused to meet with you?
I was in the city of Victorville chambers over here at planning and building twice, two separate occasions, every time I had to fill out my complaint forms and to go ahead and come before council of, or planning and come before city council. And I asked to go ahead and speak to him. And each time, they said, he's not available. I said, well, I just saw him walk by, why isn't he available? I just want to hear the actual reason why this is being refused, why I'm being considered as a trailer. And I went to make the statement, he refused, but he never came out to talk to me.
Okay, well, you used the statement, he refused. I just want to make sure that what you're saying is accurate, because just because he walks by you doesn't mean he doesn't have another appointment somewhere to do business. So if you're going to sell somebody who's refusing to meet with you, I'd like to know that he refused to meet with you.
Then I take that back. He didn't refuse, he just never came to speak to me and nobody else could give me an answer. All they said was administrative decision. That's the reality of it.
Thank you.
Anything further from members of the council? Thank you, Mr. Allman.
Thank you.
I will close the appeal hearing at this time. Because Mr. Webb has been frequently mentioned during the appeal, I would afford Mr. Webb an opportunity to share any additional information with the council that might, might be instructive on this issue.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'd like to start by saying that my information and the information on record, my understanding is it was not a city official that lodged the complaint. There was a complaint called into Code Enforcement for the motorhome or RV in the, in the drive and the applicant was cited for that. There was a second complaint called in and that was that the eaves were being sought off the building. Code Enforcement went out and put a stop work order and a building inspector went out and put a stop work order on the job at that point. The appellant was told to come in and to, that a building permit was required. When the applicant came in, he was fairly upset and upset some of the front counter staff. I got a call in the field from Kevin Collins, the building official, who's also the assistant director of building. And he told me he was going to the counter to handle it, filled me in on the details. I told him to make sure and tell the appellant that the part of the process is pulling a building permit, however, I will not support a permit on the, on the cutting of the eaves. But that will then allow him to go through the process and appeal my decision to the planning commission. My decision is based on interpretation of the code, which the code allows for. The only discussion of eaves and consistency and compatibility of eaves is in the section of single-family, however, is manufactured homes. And that's why it was cited. And the fact that manufactured homes are regulated to a lesser degree typically, design-wise and development-wise and building than any other structures, yet the consistency and compatibility of those eaves is relevant enough to be a requirement in the code, I then extrapolated that into single-family homes and said, therefore, it must be of significance, however, it was never anticipated that anybody would cut their front eaves off. And so therefore, I rejected it based upon, based upon that. And so we filed the building permit knowing that it would be denied and it was denied. As far as, as far as the times he was in, the only, the only time I'm aware of was the time when Kevin Collins dealt with him at the counter. I don't know whether he was asking for me or not, that was not stated to me. Any other time, I'm not aware of being requested for meetings, so it did not come to my attention. And that is, that is where we're at.
Questions or comments from members of the council? Thank you, Mr. Webb. Public hearing, the appeal hearing has been closed. The council, you have before you on item three, two versions. Version A, which if adopted, would grant Mr. Allman's appeal. Version B, if adopted, would deny Mr. Allman's appeal and uphold the decision of the planning commission. Questions or comments from members of the council?
I didn't hear anything from Mr. Allman that indicated the planning commission erred or had some kind of faulty decision-making process. I'm not inclined to go against the planning commission typically unless something is shown that they've erred in their decision-making. And I also agree with Mr. Webb on the issues with motorhomes and, and cutting of eaves just because we want to fit a motorhome in there. I wouldn't appreciate it if my neighbor started cutting their eaves away either. It's kind of aesthetics issue, but I'm not inclined to, to grant the appeal.
Other questions or comments?
Mr. Allman indicated that the information he gave to us tonight was the same information.
A, if there's nothing further, a motion would be in order? Well, proposed resolution 08-156, version B, which would deny the appeal, uphold the planning commission? There's a motion? Is there a second? Been moved and seconded, may we vote? That decision is unanimous. Item four is another appeal hearing to hear arguments for or against proposed resolution 08-169, versions A and B. Version A would grant appeal. Version B would deny the appeal. This issue deals with an appeal from the planning commission decision for a lot line adjustment, dealing with the recorded parcel map and a site plan regarding an 850,000 square foot beverage manufacturing and distribution facility located on Southern California Logistics Airport, former George Air Force Base. And the appellant is Benham, the Benham Companies LLC. Before I open the public hearing, I would indicate that we have just received disc from the Briggs Law Firm, asking for a massive amount of public records information, all of which has been provided, or most all of which has been provided to them just recently in another item. I also am advised that we have received a letter from the Briggs Law Firm and a letter from Mike Nelson. For matters of the record, all of those items will be deemed received. They will become a part of the public record. They've all been provided to members of the council and to staff. Now, I am further advised that there has been a request from Dr. Pepper Snapple for this item to be continued?
No, that is incorrect. Mayor Caldwell, the appellant actually is not the Benham Companies. They are the applicant of the original decision. The appellant is Grove Victorville Smart, care of Corey Briggs, Briggs Law Corporation. Earlier today, as you mentioned, but it was significantly earlier today, we did receive a correspondence from the Briggs Law Corporation accompanied by a couple of discs of information concerning the planning commission decision. Planning staff had the opportunity to review that documentation and even though it was significant and substantive, it actually was very similar to prior documentation that the city has received in connection with other appeals by the same law corporation. It may behoove you to, to get some input from planning staff as to their analysis of that documentation. We also do, however, have a letter from general counsel, from Dr. Pepper Snapple, recommending or requesting that the council deny the appeal. So there are two pieces. From the appellant, Briggs Law Corporation, which I would recommend that we have addressed. And then from Dr. Pepper Snapple suggesting or requesting, deny the appeal and they have representatives here.
Well, it's my understanding that the planning commission granted the lot line adjustment, is that correct?
Correct.
Who is appealing that planning commission decision?
Briggs Law Corporation, on behalf of Grove Victorville Smart.
The, the agenda item indicates it's an appeal hearing and it makes reference to the Benham Companies. I'm confused.
The Benham Company is the applicant under the original lot line adjustment proceedings.
Other than this disc and this letter just received, is that the first notice we've had about being appealed?
Well, we, we got the notice of appeal from the Briggs Law Corporation, I think, a week ago and there was no documentation with it. They just pulled out the appeal and waited until today to submit documentation supporting their...
Got it. Mr. Webb?
Mayor Council, staff has, well, actually, if you recall, a couple of months ago, when Briggs sent the additional documentation before the hearing for another item, the stack was approximately this tall and it was thousands and thousands of pages we printed out. Today was much less. Basically, what they sent us was the same items that we have received before, that the council has, has viewed and that has, staff has responded to on prior items that have all been assessed and addressed sufficiently in our environmental analysis tonight. In addition to that, was only this much information. And it's, it's either, it's either irrelevant or it has also been adequately addressed in our environmental, in our environmental assessment this evening. So we feel confident that at this point, it can, it can go forward as far as being reviewed, being addressed, assessed and/or the mass of it, having been reviewed previously on another item by, by the city council. And so therefore, we would recommend that this go forward and that the appeal be denied also.
D. Borodniewski is the city attorney. What is your legal comments to what Mr. Webb, who's an excellent planner but not an attorney?
Given that, again, we have seen exactly the same documentation and that staff has had the opportunity to review the documentation and is comfortable that the issues raised in the documentation have been adequately addressed in our environmental documentation, I would go along with staff's recommendation to deny the appeal, assuming, again, you have to open the, the appeal hearing and see if there's any information that we haven't seen as of this date. Consider that obviously as part of the record and then if there's nothing in addition, I think that staff has adequately addressed the issues raised by the Briggs Law Corporation and confident that all of those issues have been adequately addressed.
Questions or comments from members of the council? Hearing none, I will open the appeal hearing regarding the planning commission decision that granted the lot line adjustment on PLN 08-00-105. We have version number A, which if that were adopted, would... Make sure I get this right. That would, that would grant the appeal?
Version A would grant the appeal, version B would deny the appeal.
If it would be heavy for us, A and B, I will open the public hearing on item four, PLN 08-00-105. I've received a card from William M. Nelson of Plano, Texas.
Mayor Caldwell, councilmen and women of Victorville staff, appreciate the opportunity to make a very brief comment. You've received a letter from us concerning our feelings about this proceeding, the appeal and our position that this appeal should be denied. But first, before I get into that, I wanted to thank the city personally and on behalf of our company, our chairman, our shareholders, for the cooperation and the invaluable assistance in helping us weave through this regulatory maze that would baffle most people, but we are just about there. And we look very much forward to bringing over 200 jobs to this community and adding a 800,000 square foot manufacturing and distribution facility. The letter is for the purpose, two purposes. One, we wanted to introduce it into the record to help support the city in terms of denying this appeal. I think as you read the letter, and I believe it's a part of your agenda, I have additional copies if anybody needs any. It identifies over a dozen voluntary initiatives by the company to improve the environmental compliance of our company, this facility to have nominal or no impact on the environment or this community in large. We wanted the city council to know that and we wanted the citizens of this community to know that as well. We're prepared to answer any questions you might have about those initiatives, but they are generally leading edge sort of technologies that are emerging, that we are going to implement on our own, on our own volition, not required by any regulation, not required by any statute. There are processes there that will help reduce emissions to next to nothing, conserve water, conserve energy and not create any sort of greenhouse effects or any of the sorts of claims that the appellant has made. We are also, and this may be something that you're not aware, that by building this facility in this location, there are good business reasons for us to do this, but there are also very tangible environmental reasons to do this. One is that we are closing four other facilities in the surrounding area. And by doing that, because we are more essentially located in terms of our customers and where we're shipping product, we have a huge reduction in mileage in terms of shipping product and also because this area will be the focal point for where our employees will be living, the amount of time that they're going to be spending on the road is also going to be dramatically reduced. I have with me Kendall Yorn, who's our vice president of engineering. And Kendall, maybe you could just speak to that particular issue?
We do have the letter of November 18th as an addition to the materials that's been presented to us and this letter will be a part of the record. We all have a copy with us on the dimes.
Okay. Then lastly, just, just for the record, we believe that the appeal filed by the Briggs Law Corporation is unsupported by the facts or the law and that all the potential environmental impacts of the project have been properly evaluated and mitigation measures have been identified. And so we would support denial of this appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Next card I have is from Frank Sexton. Mr. Sexton, passing? The next card I have for item seven is Todd Porter. Excuse me. Jumped ahead. So that's the end of the cards I have for item four. Questions or comments from members of the council?
Mayor Caldwell, I would just also, for the record, like to point out that the Briggs Law Corporation has sort of initiated the same tactic in numerous cities in Southern California. They seem to have an MO of going into communities that are trying to approve industrial, commercial projects and submit voluminous... projects, and submit voluminous information. We really question whether their motives are a real concern for the environment or the impacts, because we believe those have been adequately addressed.
Well, the lot line adjustment, in my opinion, is essential for this very worthwhile project to go forward. The creation of jobs, enhancement of economic opportunity, is hugely important to the welfare, not just of Victorville, but the Victor Valley. I think everybody on this dais is well aware of what the city is doing in order to address issues of water that have been raised. If there's any questions, I'll ask Mr. Roberts to briefly explain what we're doing to deal with the water issue for this facility.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. As was previously discussed, in accordance with the court ordered adjudication and stipulation, all water that is pumped out of the groundwater basin to be supplied to users must be replaced. So in this instance, 100% of the water that is pumped to the Dr. Pepper facility, there will be an accounting for that, and there will be a requirement then to pay the fees to the Mojave Water Agency to replace that water. This project goes far beyond what would be a normal requirement for the rest of us for a home, in that even though Dr. Pepper will pay to replenish all of that water from the state project water, the water that is coming out of their project is going to be captured and treated, and then reused. And it's estimated that 70% of the water coming out of that project then will be reused for the beneficial use that will offset other users. So when you consider the fact that they are replacing 100% of the water that they pump, but then in addition to that, we are recapturing and reusing 70% of the water coming out of the back end, this project, probably more than any other, has a net benefit and increase on the supply of the water in the aqueduct. We're very pleased that the joint effort of the city of Victorville, the Victor Valley Water Reclamation Authority has worked with us on that project as well, as well as the Benham Companies doing this design, and we are very excited that this will probably be one of the most beneficial water reuse and aquifer recharge projects anywhere within the Victor Valley.
Questions or comments of Mr. Roberts? Anyone else in the audience intending to testify or make comments with regard to the appeal hearing, agenda item number four, dealing with the lot line adjustment for the 850,000-square-foot beverage manufacturing and distribution plant? Anybody? Didn't give me a card that wanted to speak. Hearing none, I will close the appeal hearing.
Move to version V, denying the appeal.
Moved and seconded, may we vote? That takes us to agenda item number five, and there's been a request that this nuisance abatement proceeding be continued for approximately 30 days, which would take us to the second meeting in December, which would be December...
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, 7:00 PM, these chambers. Even though we are going to continue this public hearing, I will reopen the appeal hearing, or the public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who was here tonight who wishes to speak, knowing that the council's not going to act on it, you're invited to do so at this time. I have no cards indicating any interest in speaking on this item. Hearing done, then I will continue agenda item five, as previously indicated, to the second meeting in December, December 16th, 7:00 PM, these chambers. That takes us to item six, and I will defer to Mayor Protem Alman. As I indicated earlier, I need to accuse myself and leave the dais, because I am a shareholder in Walmart. End the gavel to Mayor Protem.
Thank you.
But there are no cards indicating any interest to speak.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will open the public hearing for item number six. Public hearing called to hear arguments for or against the approval of Crossroads at 395 Shopping Center, and the adoption of resolution number 08-160, or 08-161, and 08-162, and the introduction of ordinance is number 2229 and 2230. I will open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak for or against?
Yes, Mayor Protem, and counsel, I would just like to note, similar to the last item, we did receive additional information this evening. However, it was, to a lesser degree, in weight, as well as in content, as the prior case. And so I would just like to again say that we find that staff has reviewed this, and staff finds it either to be irrelevant to this item, or to have been adequately addressed in the environmental review and analysis of the item before you this evening. And so therefore, we would recommend approval of this item this evening.
Thank you. Anybody wishing to speak for or against on this item? Okay, seeing no one, I will close the hearing.
Mayor Protem Alman, I would just like to add again, so the record, it's clear there is the additional item, which, again, is correspondence, as Mr. Webb addressed. It's correspondence from the Briggs Law Corporation, and CD with information on it, and as Mr. Webb already addressed, there are no additional issues that have been raised in terms of staff's review of that documentation, so staff is recommending against approval.
Thank you. Question from counsel? Comments? None. Okay, a motion would be in order?
Approval of the resolution 08-160... Changed in front of me. Changed my screen for me, I don't know... Approval of the resolution, introduction of the ordinance, I don't have the numbers, you changed them. That's my motion.
You have resolutions 08-160, 08-161, 08-162. You can take those all on one item, and then you need introduction of the ordinance, and I would recommend two motions, one for those three resolutions.
Ordinance number 2229, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Victorville approving zone change PLN 0700110 to reclassify the north one-half of parcels 3103, 56107, and 08, from R1, single-family residential, to C2, general commercial, Rothbart Development Corporation.
If there's a reading?
And does that include introduction as well?
Move introduction of ordinance number 2229.
Second. Third.
May we vote?
Ordinance number 2230, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Victorville for development agreement PLN 0700111, a development agreement between the city of Victorville and Rothbart Development Corporation, relative to portions of the development known as the Crossroads at 395, Rothbart Development Corporation.
Pived away further reading, and move for introduction of ordinance number 2230.
Second. That'll close the public hearing, and we'll get the mayor out from little behind the door, please. We need a chair back there.
Agenda item seven is a public hearing to consider proposed resolution 08165, which is a public hearing to deal with the declaration of the public interest, convenience, and necessity to require the acquisition of certain billboards and an easement located in the city of Victorville on APN 3093-111-08, for public use pursuant to the various provisions of the government code, and authorizing the city to proceed with acquisition of the easement by eminent domain, and directing the city attorney to commence an action in the San Diego County Superior Court for that purpose. Now, we have received, as I indicated earlier, a letter from the law firm of Gresham Savage, Nolan, and Tilden, which will be a part of the official record, was received at 3:30 PM today. All of the council have a copy of that letter on the dais. Before I go to the cards, it's my understanding that this item is to be continued?
Well, we want to first understand what the testimony is, but then there may be a recommendation based on testimony to continue this for 30 days.
Any other questions or comments from members of the council? If not, then I will declare open the public hearing on proposed resolution 08165, and invite anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard for or against, pro or con, on the issue of the declaration of public interest, convenience, and necessity to acquire the acquisition of certain billboard and easement on APN 3093-111-08, and authorize the proceedings to acquire by eminent domain the necessary easement. Anyone in the audience who wish to be heard for or against, pro or con? Hearing done, then I will go through the cards. First card I have is Todd Porter.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you. We are in favor. My name is Ted Stream, from Gresham Savage, Nolan, and Tilden, and I represent Lamar Advertising. Mr. Porter's here. We just want to say that we were in favor...
I do have your card.
I do, I do. And I thought I could kill two birds with one stone, and just say that we're in favor of deferring this matter for 30 days. Recommendation, if that's the council's wish, then I'll reserve my comments for another time.
Stream, I suspect, then, that you're also speaking for Todd Porter, who submitted a card?
I am, I apologize, yes. Todd Porter is the general manager and vice president of Lamar Advertising, and I represent Lamar Advertising. I'm speaking for both Todd Porter and myself, we both have cards in.
Well, I also have a card for Michael Duane Davis. I don't see him.
No?
Because he worked for me for a number of years. I'd know him if I signed, but he's not here, is he?
And I am not him either, but I am also speaking for Mr. Davis tonight.
Tell Mr. Davis that we much prefer having you here.
I would gladly do that.
Please tell him that Mayor Terry Caldwell sends greetings.
I will.
Any opposition to the request for continuance? Anyone else in the audience who had intended to address on this issue? Based upon the request of Mr. Stream, we will continue this matter until December 16th, 7:00 PM, these chambers, the public hearing is open, and it will remain open.
Thank you.
Thank you. The... Well, before I leave, agenda item seven, I do have a card from Dorothy Miller wishing to address the council on number seven. Ms. Miller's shaking her head no. Okay. Then we will go to item eight, which is a consent calendar, items enumerated A through E. Again, these have been predetermined to be routine and non-controversial. They'll be adopted with one motion unless there's a request for removal.
Move for approval?
That is unanimous. Item nine is proposed resolution 08126, which if adopted, would authorize the director of the Victorville Municipal Utility Services to execute contracts for the supply of electricity. Questions or comments from members of the council?
For approval of resolution 08126?
Number 10, proposed resolution number 08167, which if adopted, would give approval and authorization to destroy certain records of the city development department, the finance department, golf, accounts receivable division, city clerk records, and D2 customer service division. Questions or comments from members of the council? That is unanimous. Item 11 is proposed resolution number 08170, which deals with the... With the proposed... Well, the proposed resolution would deal...
We've already done that one, yeah.
We've done 11, that's one of the ones that's gone. Okay. Agenda item 12 is the consideration of the amended joint powers agreement for the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. As the council will recall, although I can't remember the date, I'd say a year or more ago, the council met with workshop session with all members of the senior staff, I believe all members of the senior staff were there, to discuss revisions to the way we have conducted business in the city, part of it to be focused on George Air Force Base, other parts of it dealing with the creation of a charter city, and things like that. Staff proposed creation of an independent authority to proceed with the rather intense work that is involved with all of the existing projects, and projects in the pipeline, and projects being pursued. For reasons that I'll let Mr. Roberts explain in a moment, the staff did not move aggressively. The council, on a unanimous vote, instructed the city manager and the city department heads to move aggressively to implement those items, and then I will take the liberty of breaching an employee evaluation that is basically in confidence, but the council did remind Mr. Roberts that it was a unanimous vote for him to get this thing implemented, and get it implemented ASAP. And again, for reasons that I'll leave for Mr. Roberts to explain, it didn't happen on as timely a basis as the council wanted. The council, again, in public session reaffirmed its desire to get this done, and so finally, the council, at the last meeting unanimously approved the Third Amendment to the JPA, and that is now unanimously a part of the city process. And the issue then left, the last remaining issue, would be to appoint members to fill that commission slot. So that's the issue that's before us. Mr. Roberts, I'm sure you'd like to flesh out what I just said about your lack of timeliness.
Do you wish me to restrict to that, or would you like a bit more background?
Whatever you feel is appropriate.
Well, as the council is aware, this is an item that came up about three years ago, although... ago, although for the entire nine years that I have occupied the seat of city manager and even before that, there have been quite regularly comments from the council that there was a concern that we had been dedicating too many resources to the effort to revitalize George Air Force Base, both in terms of staff resources and in terms of financial resources, although staff attempted always to weigh that against what has always been the council's number-one priority of job creation and redevelopment of George Air Force Base. I don't know that staff necessarily shared the council's concern that we were spread too thin and actually felt that we were handling both items adequately. But about three years ago, I would say, there was a substantial change in the effort to redevelop George Air Force Base. As the council will recall, our original master plans for George Air Force Base focused in on aviation reuse, whether it was air cargo, which then grew into aircraft maintenance, and then the attraction of manufacturing and distribution job-creating activities. The aviation side was very professionally and aggressively handled by our airport staff under the direction of Mr. Peter Soderquist, along with Jim Worsham, who has headed up that economic development side on the aviation of the airport with quite phenomenal results, with the construction of four wide-body hangars, execution of agreements with companies such as GE, FedEx, Boeing, Pratt &amp; Whitney, and others, leading edge the world's largest aircraft painting company. Peter and his staff handled most all of that effort. On the side of the development of the manufacturing and distribution, such as Dr. Pepper that was here tonight, Sterling, working together with Keith Metzger, our economic development director, handled all of those projects as well. But the city began embarking on what now are very complex and exciting projects. We, Inland Energy brought to us the $600 million High Desert One Power Project, which in essence launched our entire ability to go forward with our redevelopment plan, and we began now Power Plant Victorville Number Two, which is the nation's first hybrid power plant combining parabolic solar mirrors with natural gas combined-cycle turbines valued at $1.2 billion, very complex project to take through the CEC permitting process. In addition, we began at the request, really, of Burlington Northern to consider not only an intermodal facility for the entire valley, but also to consider an inland port, and that effort has ramped up with the ports of Long Beach and Los Angeles, where they now are doing a feasibility study to where most people knowledgeable in the business believe that Victorville is the only way to address the demand for increased items coming in through the ports of Long Beach and Los Angeles, at the same time dealing with the traffic congestion and air quality issues. That is a monumental undertaking that will have an impact upon not only the entire economy future of California, as was stated by the ports of Long Beach and Los Angeles, but probably the entire United States, in as much as 60% of the goods that come into the United States come in through those ports. The projections are for the number of imported goods to triple over the amount that are currently coming in through the ports of Long Beach and Los Angeles. In addition to that, a project was brought to us, again, introduced by Inland, which is a high-speed rail between Victorville and Las Vegas. It'll be the first of its kind in the nation. It is a privately financed, high-speed rail project. The result of that will be a tremendous development effort within the city of Victorville, 30,000 acres of a master-planned community that will include high levels of commercial, retail, upscale housing, and related development. So we, in the last three years, have seen a dramatic increase in the size and the complexity of the projects that we have come our way, and so I think that, at that point, staff agreed with city council that our resources are stretched, and that not only are our resources stretched, the city itself, city council, is being faced with dealing with issues of concern with the community, with traffic congestion and crime and other growth-related issues, and that those efforts in themselves are going to demand a tremendous amount of effort and focus by the city council. At the same time, we have to increase the involvement of elected officials and board members and policymakers in dealing with these other large-scale projects. The fact of the matter is that the involvement of the city council in economic development has not been equitable. We have city council members that consume a tremendous amount of their time involved in economic development, in meetings and in travel, and we have other members of the council that spend no time involved in those activities. We cannot continue in that manner and put in the time that is necessary to meet both the demands of these projects for economic development and to be able to address the issues that are facing the city from its municipal corporation. Because of that realization, staff recommended then the creation of an agency that was focused in on economic development. In fact, this is a very standard model that almost any metropolitan area of our size does have independent agencies focused entirely on economic development. This valley attempted previously to establish such an effort, which was RITA. That effort was a complete failure, and at this point, you have no such effort in this valley. You have no participation from the public, pardon me, from the private sector. If you were to go to Antelope Valley and look at the Antelope Valley Board of Trade and see the involvement that occurs over there and the success of their program, we desperately need an equivalent program here, and the fact that not only the size of our community at 500,000, but the complexity of these projects demand that there be a focused effort on economic development. Staff proposed the formation of an agency that would focus in on that. There have been several meetings, all by the city council, where the city council all agreed and, in fact, directed staff to go forward and put that together. I mistakenly believed that that was a simple process that could be accomplished in a very short amount of time, and that when the council directed me from this dais and Mr. D. Portnovsky to go forward with that, we did find out that actually it was a bit more of a complicated process than we had expected, and the firm of GDQ has been working very diligently through to address all of the various issues to make sure that that agency will have success once it goes forward with that effort. And so those documents and amendments to the JPA were prepared and presented to the city council at the last meeting. They were adopted, and the last remaining item is for the council to select the board members of that amended JPA, and we're recommending that council go forward with that action tonight.
Questions or comments from members of the council?
I have a comment. I went back on the last agenda, and it was on the consent calendar, this item, and there wasn't this backup paper that I have in front of me now. I may be the only one that's not understanding why we have to create another level of government. And what surprises me is the money that they're going to take 100% of the tax increments from the city and the RITA project, 50%, and that their stipends would be no more than 75%. I can't find, here it is. In the event, the compensation of the commissioner may not exceed 75% of the salary of a superior court judge. With the trying times now, I think, I don't know. I'm not saying that everybody's being stretched. I'm sure staff is, and we are moving forward on a lot of very intricate projects, and I know Terry's been doing a lot of traveling on our behalf, and I'm probably the one that has not done anything in the economic sense that John just mentioned. But this, when I read this, I really was surprised at some of the things that are in here. The commission may be appointed, but if two or three people on this commission doesn't like another commissioner, they in turn can have him leave, him or her, leave without any reason. I just don't understand why another layer of government be put in place. That's all I had to say. I'm just, I was surprised when I read this, I really was.
Other questions or comments?
Oh, I read the, and I missed some, I must have missed some sections when I read it, that we did, we do support the, at least I do, the agency that we created. But when I went back and I looked at the information or the agreement, it has some things that I thought, you know, needed to be clarified to me. One was the, I thought it was going to be a council-appointed board, whether it was councilmen or councilpersons, or we would appoint individuals from outside the council to sit on that, on that board. As it turns out, I guess the first, the first board could be the city council, but after four years, it would become an independent board, and the only question I would have is, when I read that, is not accountable to anybody, so I, you know, I, Terry can answer that for me. I know that John mentioned that that's the model that's used in cities, but, you know, as a public, like that official, I feel that there always has to be some accountability. That was that, then I looked, that was one item. How they would, once the initial board was created, then they in turn would elect their own members. I saw, you know, 10 years from now, who knows what the board could look like. There wouldn't be no accountability. And then I kind of read towards the end, and there was a, it was, the agreement was irrevocable, and it was for 30 years, so that means we couldn't do amendments like we did.
I'll ask, answer a couple of the issues you raised. First, Mayor Proton Almond, it's not a new layer of government. This is actually an amendment of the existing airport authority, and what we tried to do was basically streamline the process and at the same time establish more autonomy for the airport authority so it can do more of the economic development activities consistent kind of with the direction of the council. In terms of amendments, no, the amendment process requires still a city council action, the redevelopment agency action, but also then the airport authority action, so it's a three-party, three involved in the, in the process, and, you know, you're right in terms of the selection of subsequent commissioners is done by that board. Again, the hope here is to create some autonomy so that, once this initial body gets going, it has a little more autonomy and has the ability then to sort of, and again, the 30-year term is the same purpose, to give some, some confidence to essentially the economic development entities that come to the city of Victorville that know this is the entity we're dealing with, there's some longevity here, we are going to be contracting with this entity, they're not going away, and our projects aren't in jeopardy. It's synonymous with developers coming to the city and wanting development agreements. Here, instead of that, you've got a vehicle that says, when the developer comes to town, here's an entity that's going to be around if I do my development project, and my development project therefore has a likelihood of success. I think that's, we tried to craft something that was somewhat to, or aligned with, with what the council's direction was. One of the problems we ran across and the reason it took so long was we kept running into sort of legal hurdles about the ability to do that, so. Not a new layer of government, it's very similar to the airport authority, it just gives you some expanded powers, standard autonomy, and gives you the ability. Economic development standpoint and from the private sector is going to make far more attractive to get involved here.
Other questions or comments?
I just, an observation myself is that there are these commissions where they're, the committee in itself reappoints itself, are not unusual for this state. As a matter of fact, I sat on one for many years here. Most of you know I sat on the California-Nevada Maglev Commission, and that was, is commissioned by the governor's office and the legislature, and the language in there was that each side, the Nevada side had eight members and the California side had eight members, I was one of those eight members for a good eight or 10 years there, they voted me off that committee. That was their authority, I didn't particularly like it, I kind of wanted to stay on it, but a majority of them voted me off that committee. So that, that's a normal operation. There's other boards down there in the Los Angeles area, the port authorities and others that operate under that same kind of a format. So that, as a rule, is not a bad thing. What we're going to do here, I think, is simply speed line, speed line the process of going out and promoting the businesses that we have in the SCLA arena there, and I feel that this is badly needed. We should have done it a long time ago, and I support what we have done to create the commission and the airport authority commission here with the amendment and whatever the council wishes in terms of filling the five slots now, which is about the only thing left to do, and then proceed on. And I'd just remind one other thing. This is, this commission is dealing with the redevelopment agency money at SCLA, not the city redevelopment agency. There are two pots of money here, so this is restricted to the SCLA activity that we're involved with there. And one of my notes is, also indicated that over the process of developing this platform, we have loaned into the RDA to get it off. We started with zero tax increment when George Air Force Base closed, and there was an extraordinary amount of financial commitment that had to be put in play. This council took that and ran with it, and we've, we've got a sizable amount of money to be paid back to us, and that is just now beginning to come back on a positive return basis. We paid a little bit back, and we've still got more to go, and this body is responsible for making sure that the city gets all of that money back into the city general fund and the city redevelopment agency where we borrowed it from.
Other questions or comments? I want to take a moment to comment on something that Mr. Roberts said with regard to the inland port. I think I've reported to this council. I appeared before the Long Beach Port Commissioners Meeting, urged the participation of Long Beach with Victorville for a feasibility study to build the inland port. I was joined at the podium by Congressman Dana Rohrbacher, who not only supports that effort, but is, in his own right, very aggressively pushing it. A week or two later, I appeared before the Los Angeles Port Authority and made a similar pitch to them, and again Congressman Dana Rohrbacher was there championing what we're trying to do in supporting the city of Victorville's effort to build the inland port. Although I was going to mention it under council reports, I think it's probably more appropriate to mention it now. I had a conversation Sunday with Congressman Rohrbacher, who wanted me to tell this council that he is 110% supportive of what we're doing. He thinks it's the right thing. He said anything that the city of Victorville needs that he can deliver. Alls we got to do is give him a call. I think that the march towards the creation of the inland port is moving ahead faster and with more layers of cooperation than I could have imagined. To have Senator Loenthal engaged in this with us, the Vice Mayor of Long Beach, Bonnie Loenthal, and others, it tells me that, as exciting as all of the things are that are going on at former George Air Force Base, it won't be long before we look back and say, well, those were just the baby steps. Giant steps are getting bigger, and the inland port concept, more and more moving towards All five of us, with most everybody in the senior staff that's here tonight, expect the only exception to that would be from the fire department, who wasn't with us then, but but he's with us now, was a directive of the council. We all express areas of support and areas of concern. We sorted through that stuff in workshops and reached a unanimous position to forge ahead with this. Yes, it's new and innovative for this city, but everything that this city is doing is new and innovative. We are not a traditional city. We have not been a traditional city since the closure of former George Air Force Base in 1992. Growing up, we need to adapt. That each goes, you know, those who fear to tread, stay home. Think that that's what this city's all about. But with that, I am going to move that the commission seats be filled by Councilman Rudy Caverialis, Almond, Hunter, Mr. Rothschild, and myself, and ahead, and make this thing work for the benefit of not just the city of Victorville, but the entire Victor Valley. Create the jobs, increase the economic opportunities for everybody that is inherent with an aggressive redevelopment project at former George Air Force Base. Unanimous. Now we all have another job.
Can I just say something? And, you know, I'm not opposed to this, except that I was really concerned, you know, and like you said, we might be kind of hedging a little bit because of the unknown, but creating a unit out there, accountability is kind of, you know.
Accountability always built in. There isn't a public entity in this state that doesn't have that accountability. Some are independent from others, embedded within the same jurisdictions. It's all over the state that's going on. This council, whether it's a majority sitting on the board or not, is always going to be one of those oversights. It's going to be looking over there at what they're doing. The attorney generals, the county and the state are there, and other interested parties, but this is all over the state.
I understand that. However, there are plenty out there. We may be watching them, but I don't think there's that much we can do if they're out there going somewhere where maybe they're going in another direction than we don't want to go in the first place. That could be like 10 years. It's not going to happen with us, but it could happen as the same. Courts come on, 10 years.
It is also, just so you're aware, I mean, it is still a public body. It's going to be subject to the Brown Act and all other regular public, we're not changing any of that. We can't. That was some of the things we were looking at, and it's a complete public body, subject to all of the Brown Act and everything else.
I think it's also important to recognize that those of us who are city council members do not get that salary that you mentioned about.
Well, I don't think anybody should get that big salary. I mean, they want to be on the commission and help out out there and do some, she's smiling. But I'm just saying, that struck me. There were things, just things, as a council member, I was concerned.
And rightfully so.
I've seen that 75 in other agreements.
Very standard provision.
What struck me is, I haven't been around. I've been very sheltered.
All right. We are now to council reports. Councilman Caverialis.
We were talking about water and another component that John mentioned.
I guess I missed one, Rudy. I apologize.
Okay.
I skipped over item 13. My agenda is a total mess. Item 13 is...
Request to adopt the amended 2008-2009 Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year 7 through 11 Consolidated Plan to you.
Whoops, here it is.
Thanks. Use Neighborhood Stabilization Program funds in the amount of $5,311,360.
I have a question. In the breakdown, you had, I don't know, 1.1 million going for housing, and then for multi, which I interpreted that to be apartments. How is that going to be?
The one point, break on 1.3, approximately 1.4, for the multifamily is a requirement of these funds to be used specifically for very low mod, and it's approximately that amount, and it's a requirement. That's the reason why it's only, it only works with multifamily. It wouldn't be able to work for...
I understood the single, because that would go to help mortgages and that's right.
Single family, right, for more, for the acquire.
But people living in an apartment, how would that help?
Oh, this money is the NSP, the Neighborhood Stabilization Program Funds, is specifically a part, a new allocation of community development block grant that is for foreclosure properties only, to address specific REOs. And the only way to use the money is for REO properties, which, and like I was saying, the 25% requirement is to assist the very low, which is 50% of AMI, and those households would not be able to qualify to buy a home. So the only way that we could assist those is buying multifamily REO properties to be able to rent them. That's why that portion.
Further questions, comments? Move and seconded. May we vote? Unanimous. That does conclude the agenda, with the exception of the closed session items that are enumerated on the agenda.
Mayor Caldwell, I do not need closed session. Item number 18.
18 will be removed. Other changes?
There are no other changes.
I'm going to invite the council and appropriate senior staff into the closed session to discuss the items enumerated in the agenda, except for 18, which has been removed. It is not anticipated that there will be any reportable action at the conclusion of the closed session, but that can never be guaranteed. Is reportable action will come out of closed session, and I will announce it. Welcome to stay. The lights and the air conditioning will stay on. Have better things to do, and we come out from closed session, and these chambers are vacant. We will not be offended. Thank you for coming. Thank you for being a part of the city's business, and other than the closed session, we will be adjourned at the conclusion of that. Okay. I will call the meeting back to order from closed session. I will indicate that there are reportable actions, and I will refer to the city attorney to put on record the reportable action.
The first reportable action is to go out and approve a sale with enterprises for That one may be... Enter into a tolling agreement with W4LS.
That, this meeting, turned? Second, seven minutes.